Always call the meeting to order. Board agenda, we have approval of the agenda. Actually, I think it should be the agenda for today, not the September 25th one, but today's agenda.
Good move, we approved today's agenda.
Right.
October 23rd.
Do we have a second? So. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we being public members? No, not that I see. So, let's jump into the budget.
The budget time is here. We have to submit the budget to the city through their software.
Tuesday.
And so here is our budget, and I just pulled out a few things that we're asking for a little bit more money on. One is sanitation supplies. We go through quite a bit of that. We did ask for an increase, a one-time increase in funds for furnishings. We would like to replace the tables and chairs at Meeting Room D if you were, which are actually relatively new, considering the building, but a lot of them are broken and that we're not even using the chairs that we originally purchased for that space because of the damage that's been done to them. They're just, they weren't held, it didn't hold up to the use. So we'd like to buy some more sturdy equipment there. Miscellaneous processing supplies is not an increase. We're just asking to move over RFID tags into that line of originally, it was listed as a capital expense because we bought 300,000 of them for our project and then it just stayed in there and just doesn't make sense to keep it there. Consulting, we're asking for an increase to, just for someone to help research and do some public outreach with the public for our new strategic plan. And then some increases and a major increase in the building repair and maintenance because we are overspending that line all the time. And I don't want that to eat into other parts of the operating budget. We, if we have to replace major parts of the HVAC system or the boiler, it means we're not doing something else. And especially when the city, I am very happy that the CIP project stayed on. I sat in the meeting watching, there was several projects just fall off, but they, they're right now holding at 2030 that we would place all the HVAC units. It just means that if there's, and there's gonna be, there might need to be a major repair and then that's needs to come out of the operating budget.
This could be a substantial expense.
A substantial expense. There, and they're also replacing HVAC units on City Hall in 2030. So I think that's what they were thinking is if they combine those projects, we might be able to get a better deal or maybe the at the same time.
Cross our fingers. Yep. Make it to then.
I'm happy to answer any questions. The next step will be, we submit it in the software and then we meet with the city manager's office to discuss what we were asking for.
I actually wondered if the library materials increase was adequate with all the changes going on in the market.
Yeah, I played around with that number a little bit. The reason why I didn't ask for so more than what I had put in here was, I think we can now negotiate a little bit more with other vendors because we're spending more with those. The more you buy, the better the discounts. The second thing was the digital materials line is coming down a little bit in our expenditures because we have changed the way that we repurchase. So a lot of the money that we were spending on digital materials in the last couple of years were just repurchasing of eBooks and audiobooks we already own. We have to buy a lot of our collection every two years to keep them and we kind of up the ante of how much you have to circ to stay in the collection. Mainly because we want to be able to order new things. And if we're repurchasing everything, we're unable to keep more current collection. We're also playing around with different models of if there's cost per circ through overdrive, if someone does a purchase suggestion rather than buying a hundred dollar, a hundred and twenty dollar audiobook, we might just say, okay, for the next two weeks, it's available. And you can do the cost per circ. So that's saving some money there too. So we're experimenting.
Questions or comments? Because this is something I'll take action on tonight.
Yeah, that directly with the, the budget, I had been very curious with the how we're able to lower the cost for digital materials a little bit. And yeah, it's an area that I'm vaguely aware of. But yeah, so for another time, if we could have a run through on how the licensing works and different options, I'd be very interested.
Do you want to only on digital or do you want to on questions overall?
It's overall.
Could be a session.
Specifically digital is probably where I have less familiar.
We could break it up. We could do physical, but we'll start with the digital. Because they're, yeah, they're very involved. Are there questions?
No other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve the budget?
Can make a motion to approve the budget.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, all right. Boy, that's the fastest budget discussion we've ever a quarter financials and stats.
As we do in every quarter, we'll through what we've, what looks like we've overspent or what looks like we've underspent and an explanation of those. One thing that's been interesting about the Baker and Taylor disruption is that when we look at the materials added report, we're over a thousand items behind where we normally are and what we're adding to the collection. And although it didn't make it, so the materials line is only 22% spent, we would really like that to be closer to the higher end of the twenties. Almost 30% at this point or this quarter of the year. We, a lot of our digital databases are spent at the beginning of the year. So when you put that in there and you look at, then you add with the books where we are with kind of the physical materials, we're really, really behind, but we will catch up very quickly.
Not really a factor pre-orders. Like there's so many, like James Patterson puts out, how many books he puts out in a year, 10, whatever, like is that? Are you, I guess I don't know exactly what the question is here, but I'm just wondering, like, do you usually see an advance? That line item isn't sold until they're actually here, right? So it's not like pre-orders affect your actual budget line, right? But you're assuming that they are coming out because I know like November's a big, October, November, they publishing months. So in April, so I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I hope we can have this all figured out by April. So that's just a normal thing. But yeah, we have just just stacks and stacks of multiple copies coming in now of James Patterson. We have one on Fiction Catalogor's desk right now.
I would imagine.
Things people have been waiting for, for a while.
Are you getting any inquiries in the public about this waiting list?
Uh, no.
Honestly, it might be a marketing opportunity.
We, um, I think what's been interesting is we've been doing, we did the story for IPR, Iowa Public Radio. We did one with the Gazette and KCRG. And they all found out about it from reading from our website. So we, we've been posting, we had a blog post explaining the issue. We put it on social media and if they're seeing it there, I'm hoping our patrons are seeing that there too.
All right. Anything else about stats that people want to dig into more?
I did have a question about our output reports, cover sheet. Is there measurements that you're interested in seeing or for us to highlight? We, we kind of pick things out, but if there's a way that, yeah, or if you want that differently, like we, this is supposed to be for you. So what works well for you, we want to make sure that we're filling your needs.
And people understand that the person's speaking up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate the format. I like that, but I mean, I appreciate it. It's real fun to compare. And I'm curious about catalog access. When you go switch to your new system, how, how it will look as we're here, I'm just out of personal curiosity.
We can just keep putting that one there for you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just interested, but.
What was the one show we got?
That just when the new catalog access, how it changes when you switch to your new MLS. Can you do a program attendance one?
And it could be like a broad program attendance. It doesn't have to be like children's versus young adult versus.
Number right now.
Yeah, because I had to figure it out for the pig day, so.
Take it all in.
About 1,200 programs and 49,000.
Amazing, amazing.
Then you have forty, you know, forty-two thousand registered, you know, registered cardholders borrowers, like 49,000 children attending events. That's a growing, you know, growing clientele that you have.
I can't find it again to ask about it, but I know somewhere in here, there's a report on circulation by community. And one of the lines was the schools and it was zero. And I was wondering if that's loans to these schools or that's loans to kids with the AIM cards.
Loans to the schools themselves, yeah. Now, there should be, the AIM card is it's an output report.
I couldn't find it, so.
It's an output.
Maybe on page 51.
You want? Oh, yes. It's at the bottom of page 51.
Since the numbers are kind of low, but.
Fluctuate.
Yeah. I would think.
The new ID cards go out at a certain time of the year. So that's when you have librarians advertising the program a little more so. Some people do a better job of that than I do personally, but.
Try and push that we are library, like this school is not good session.
Yeah.
That was set up at the beginning of the program that we were not to replace the school libraries.
Yeah, there's a little bit of ebbiness with the legal side of it. So some of us have backed off just a tiny bit on like our big promotion that we used to do, just because it's a little bit on the edge of legal. So.
It's an opt-in card.
So it's an opt-in card, but, um, you know, picture day is coming and then the new ID cards roll out. So it might change throughout the year.
Any other questions? Thanks. I don't think it's a lot of work for that element. All right, the breakfast report, we are just moving along to now.
Answer any questions? I want to thank everyone who came to the event last night. It was really, it was a nice event. Thank you. We're working through, um, just to talk a little bit about the carpeting, about how involved it's going to be. We're working through what's kind of like a phasing document of where the carpet is going to go. And when will that, where it's going to go when? And then the things that are in that portion, where they're going to go. And they have it detailed by, by the individual chairs where they can put things in. But we're really kind of working through that document to make sure what services are we offering, what disruptions there'll be so that we can be really communicate really well with the public when that's happening.
And had mentioned being one of her goals was to keep the library open while this is going on. I commend this, being able to have operations continue. I know this would be disruptive, but.
And one of the things that, I mean, we did, I hate bringing up COVID, but one of the things that during COVID, we allowed to, we learned to be a lot more nimble and be able to be okay with offering certain services in a specific way. And I think we can kind of dust off those skills a little bit and.
So we will hear from the company at this meeting next month.
Yep, I'll go through the, the carpet selection, what is kind of like a mapping of where the, it's going to be carpet tiles, different colors and how those will look. And then the phases of what to expect during, and what the timeline is.
Start to finish, do you have a rough idea of how long it will take?
Like 140 days.
Okay.
Yeah.
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 Hundred and forty workdays.
Starting in April, ending in September.
Oh, that's tricky for you guys.
Very, very, very tricky. Yeah. And as I talked about, part of it is that the CIP project was slated for this year and the funding and I want to make sure that we capture, you can roll over a project, but you really should have it started and that's the earliest we can start. And architects are working as, they're trying to work as quickly as possible.
All that summer reading, are you just going to fence off a section of the ped mall up there? I mean, do you have the city all support you on that? Just outdoor, outdoor public library for your summer reading kickoff and things.
Obviously Parks and Rec for our big Thursday programs are with them. Talking to Latasha at the senior center to use some of their rooms. Because the majority of their phasing, it does start in the children's room in June.
Yeah. So. I imagine that's a high traffic area. So you would want to attack that section.
In their plans, the, the architects, and they'll talk to you more about that too, but they, they do recognize that it is the children and the library in general for these times. So we plan to utilize Meeting Room A, B, and C a lot. So you may hear from the public, we went ahead as soon as we had found this out and locked out the meeting rooms. They will just be used for the library. At one point, we're going to move the computers in there. Another point, we'll move the children's room in there. Yeah. Kind of be the children's room, but it won't be our programming normal space. So we will not have the program numbers at 49,000.
Right, right, right.
Much different. I think for you, the couple have like an asterisk by it, I would think.
Yeah. Their bed then includes them moving the shelves because that's a whole thing too.
Yes, but yeah. Shelves, yeah.
Okay.
And they can't adjust the order that they're doing it in to protect the children's room in the summer.
They said that they had ran different modules a couple of different times and this was the best and the least disruptive.
For them.
And the, well, and the fastest, if you want to get it fastest, fastest to complete it. This is the way to do it.
Yes, there, there was a whole point during the meeting where everyone said they saw my soul leave my body. It's fine. It's fine. We're going to have beautiful carpet after. It's.
The summer is the summer.
We, we will be very nimble. We're, we're reaching out to people. We will be outside as we can be. We have the book mobile. We're already doing stories in the park with the book mobile.
We've talked to some community partners too about their facilities and maybe bringing library services there. So I think this might actually be an opportunity to work with people in the community, be out and about.
The theme this summer is plant to seed. So gardening, which I can't really do inside, outside, it'll be be okay.
Very lucky.
It is going to be okay.
It's just going to be different.
We're very lucky that Meeting Room A was just recently re-carpeted with the hearing loop installation. And so we can use Meeting Room A, move things in and out and have that available to us at all times.
Could you talk a little bit about the September 29th?
Yeah, we had about 35 people to the session and we heard a variety of things that people are looking at. I think the architect showed some concepts, concepts of expanding the children's room into the merge space. They showed a concept of a third floor event space. And I think there's a lot of discussions surrounding those specific concepts. I think one thing after sitting in that meeting and I went to a session at the Iowa Library Association that Cedar Rapids put on. They're building a new branch on the west side and they talked about how they got, they received community feedback. They went into individual, they went to community groups throughout, throughout the city and engaged them there rather than doing it at the library. And they did multiple sessions. They did sessions in a variety of languages and talked to people why they don't use the library. And I thought maybe I wanted to take a little bit of a step back and talk to the architects a little bit about 35 people in Meeting Room A, talking about some concepts that we have decided that we thought were priorities. Maybe taking a couple of step backs, step back and see with the community. So I think I'm going to kind of start doing a little bit more envisioning of that next month, now that the budget is submitted and now that a state, we submitted the state report this week too. And that will give us some time to rethink what we want to do.
How much did you follow in the process for the new pool at City Park?
Yeah.
Just some things we could do that are.
Right. Yeah, I think maybe talking to Parks and Rec about that too. That's what actually Cedar Rapids did. They went to their parks department and talked about how they did their process. They have a master plan in place that they've been using for, I would say, over a decade. And I think maybe utilizing their skills and how they get out in the community. I think the communications department at the city also has those neighbor, has invested heavily in neighborhood associations and working with different neighborhoods. I think that is, that would be a valuable asset to us as well. So I'm rethinking, going back to the drawing board a little bit about it.
I think it's a great idea.
It's really good.
Yeah. You know, the resources and the timeline are going to be the big challenges, but I think it's really good to get that kind of input first.
And one thing I talked to the architect, architect too about is I wanted to look at the building plan too. It could that be a long-term project that we, but we could be able to do in phases. So if we want to focus, if the children's room is, becomes a priority, then we can focus on that and then work on towards another part. So when we're thinking of the building, give us some goalposts that we can work towards too.
Just for the new members, are you familiar with that relationship with Merge? Why that came up in that discussion? That we have responsibility for. Do you want to briefly explain?
Yeah.
Why it's in the discussion?
So the merge space, so when the library was built, there was a bond issue that came up to build, to build a library building. And that's what the, the bond issue was around. And when they took out the bond, the library decided that part of it, to save some money, that they would not take up that whole block. So that would be the merge space and they would use that space as a rental space. And they would use the money, the income that they receive through the rent to pay off the bond. The bond has been paid off and we had coffee shops in there. We had wedge pizza was in there for a little while. And the whole, uh, hope at the time of building, the building was once the bond was paid off, then we could start working towards getting money to move into that space. And so that has always been the plan. And then we're at that point, we're at that 20-year mark or around, they were thinking 25 to 30 years where we would start moving into that space, so at least in the original documentation. And at the, now, at the, when we were the landlord for the wedge or for the restaurants, we managed the income for the rent. The city manager's office now has has taken over the control of renting out that space to merge. And I think it might be a good time to talk about a memorandum of understanding between the board of trustees and the city manager's office surrounding how leases are determined, the length of those leases and making sure that we're in on the conversation for when they're, when the rent is, or when those leases are renewed.
And we carry some responsibilities, landlords, for the management, for the emergency response of those, that facility, even though it's outside of our mission.
Yeah, our facility staff oversee that, the maintenance of that space.
So who's getting the payments right now, now that the bond is paid off?
The city.
Okay. Good to know.
Any other questions on the director's report?
I think it was a history to share.
Thank you for asking about that because I've been wanting to talk about a memorandum for understanding the point.
Departmental reports, the student services.
How cool you guys are here on Tuesday. John, you just stumbled into it.
We're.
Really delightful. Kids in their outfits.
A little bit of pandemonium, you know?
It's a little, but so much. Yeah, kids really had fun with it.
Do we have a final count for how many?
We were estimating around 500. We know that, and I did take several pictures, not everyone could fit into the meeting room stage. We had people in the hallway and outside the meeting rooms, B and C, trying to see and to do the story time. And a lot of people just gave up and went into the trick or treating. So I know we went through 100 pounds of candy.
How many ounces per child?
Yeah.
Or parent.
And there I was running like totes. I had like big Rubbermaid totes that had all of our extra candy and was just like dumping it. Yeah.
You are popular.
Well, thank you to your department and the entire staff.
Yeah, it was the library. I really do thank all of the departments that came together to create a cart and then to be out there. I know it's outside of a lot of their realms to entertain that many kids all at once. Plus the city department that came over, the police department, bike department, Parks and Rec, climate action, Green Mayor Corps. And then a new one that joined us this year and theirs was absolute delight was Neighborhood and Developmental Development Services. They did a Hansel and Gretel house that the city engineers engineered the roof. They had a certificate of occupancy and like they're, they're all their agreements. So it was up to code and it was like people could move into it if they wanted to. So I loved it. I love how people got into it. So I really do appreciate it. Makes for a great time.
Great. Looks like you bought the trick chair.
Watch out, we move it around.
All right.
All right, um. Collection Services. How are we doing with finding a new collection services?
Oh, yes, we got, we got applications, applications, uh, I think the, we got them on Tuesday. We're kind of working through them. Looks like we have several great candidates.
Looks like amazing. Great. That's good to hear that you want to do two jobs.
I know, I'm excited. So I feel like between, um, getting a new integrated library system and changing all of our vendors, they really have an opportunity to make the job thorough.
That's a nice thing.
Way to put it.
And we've been discussing this a little bit in the beginning. I know not everyone was here about the Baker and Taylor effect.
Yes. So, um, I am happy to report that we have moved all of our orders over to our, uh, secondary vendor, which is Ingram. And we're looking to identify other vendors so that we are not reliant on just the single one. And, um, but every other library in the United States seems to be doing that. So for, um, but we're happy to see books coming in, um, through Ingram and we'll get them added to the show.
With this change in vendor and then also I'm back with the carpeting, do we have increased labor costs that we should be anticipating for this year? Because we're taking on more of the task and the carpeting is going to involve more labor from the staff. Are they just absorbing it into their positions?
Absorbing it at this point, um, yeah.
It's just both between these, these two things. So a lot of work to be done.
And, uh, we've been talking as a staff of just, we're gonna get what we can get done, when we can get it done and just work methodically through it. And hopefully we'll get the processing set up and, but, you know, just being really upfront with patrons that we're doing the best that we can with the situation that we're working with. And it was great to have, um, as much press as we did so that, um, you're hearing that message, yeah.
I T?
I, I actually have one other.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, so I did notice the, uh, the former vendor was a state library vendor, right? Um, and I know as the state has been kind of drawing back from providing some of these services, there have been more cooperative agreements between local governments to try to get better rates and things like that. Has the library thought about going together with some of the other Johnson County libraries or some other large libraries in the state to try to?
Yeah, I think we'll talk about it. The next public library is a Johnson County meeting. Um, it's been a discussion, at least in the email group, what are the, what everybody's doing, um. And, uh, our next urban public library, when we do the agenda, I will ask, um, what other, what they're doing.
Okay.
Um, I did contact the state, I did contact the state library. They have no plans to do an R P.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah.
What I was talking about.
All right, um, I T? Everyone ready? Questions about the I T report?
Just wondering, do you get requests for DVDs? Watch DVD players, DVDs? Yeah.
Oh, we have, um, external. I guess, yes. Uh, we have some players that you can check out, um, but they don't last very long at all. Before you jump down Amazon.
Yeah.
Purchases.
Yeah.
Uh, we've been pushing more and more people that are just using the public PCs because there's unlimited time on those already. Without the optical drive built in, um, Don has bought external drives. So they can just plug in through the USB on them. And those be part of the process. If you bring a DVD up to the page station, they'll unlock it, take the thing out for the drive. But we haven't yet. Played the, uh, we saw it half and half out there. So most of it sort of gravitate to those.
Yeah, yeah, the ones that they want, yeah.
People, but it's really like the new, PCs because they're fast.
I was gonna say, that's a big upgrade since twenty fifteen. Just wondering too, because I haven't seen a computer with an optical drive in a long time. So just curious about that.
We do have, um, a couple of regular patrons that, uh, burned DVDs, um, for their, of their own music. Um, and so they, but they've used, they're familiar with the, the USB versions.
Sure.
We packed one action box, so three of ours.
Other questions? Well, we miss your pens. Usually there's pens or something embedded in the report. I maybe I. If we get a chance to go through all of Katie's remarks. Longer than usual.
All right. I just did want to make one note. If you, um, have not in the past received fundraising appeals from the foundation, it probably means that I don't have your address. Um, and if you are interested in seeing how we handle, uh, mid-year and year-end fundraising, um, uh, but if you supply me your address, I'll make sure that you've got a letter in the mail. Um, as a former, as a board member of other organizations, I always just make sure I'm on, on those appeal lists when I can see who's writing about stuff.
Um, I have very little for the president's report, just a couple of quick things. December twelfth is the in-service date. And if you're a new member, you may not know what that's about. If you want to mention, but it helps for me at least to get these on my calendar once in advance. Um, so do you want to mention the role that you'd like the trustees to take in the in-service day?
Yeah, uh, in-service day, we do a couple of things. Uh, the first part of the morning is to celebrate employees who are, um, they're, they've gotten to certain milestones. So by, we have some, in five years, we have thirty? Is it thirty, twenty-five years? Thirty-five? Yeah, we have, uh, so kind of, um, you get to meet those employees and learn about what they've been doing at the library. And then we do professional development. And do you want to talk about the schedule a little bit this year?
Yeah.
The what we do know. We have the architects coming.
The architects.
And they're gonna do, uh, talk to staff about the building.
And they're gonna do some, um, some focus groups, um, within each of our departments and kind of take what we, for the public and kind of make sure that everyone's on the same track about what we're wanting to do with this building, um, and the future of the library. Uh, make sure that we're all on the right track. So I think we're gonna spend about two hours, did we add an hour?
Two.
Two, two. Um, and then we have, um, someone from the University of Iowa coming to speak on.
They were from a school social worker, um, and I think they were talking.
Of de-escalation. I missed the last meeting, sorry, I guess. Um, de-escalation and, um, kind of resilient, resilient, resiliency among the staff. Uh, and we have another, um, social worker coming.
What was that? The leadership was the leader.
Oh.
From Tippy.
Tippy, Tippy, yeah, is doing leadership where you can lead from any position within the library that you're empowered to do, um.
You know, voicing your power during times of change or something like that. It was about, um, communicating when there's a lot of change happening.
Document family just opened.
I listen, you're listening.
Yeah, there's, they're on the committee. Well, I have no idea that this is, I was gonna bring this up. I just think if you're a new member, like you don't have to commit the whole day.
Right.
But you come in, you meet the staff, you're supportive of their celebration. Um, and then I think some of the sessions have been highly relevant to the trustees, but it kind of depends. So, you know, if you can consider being here for part of the day or, uh, I, I think it's a great environment. And also I give the staff a chance to know who you are because generally we disperse in the room. And you get to be staff that you may not have a chance to see because here you see mainly the coordinators.
In about two weeks, I'll send an invitation and you guys can sign up to come. Let us know that you're gonna be there and.
We tried to tailor the in-service day to things that we want the staff to learn about. Tie it to the strategic plan until you have an idea.
And we're closed.
And we're closed that day.
Do you get lunch?
Yeah, usually get coffee in the morning too.
And coffee. You have to build your own burrito. I do know that for breakfast.
Um, the other thing I wanted to remind everyone is that the lost boat is coming up on November fourth. And that's the, we get the presentation on how that will be used in the community. Um, but it's coming soon. So that's all I have in my report. Um, foundation updates. For the foundation members, we had Joseph.
Like Katie, go get away.
Sure, um, I think most of what, um, I have to report for this month is in my report. But, um, just want you to know that, of course, we're doing our due diligence, have our nine ninety in motion. And there's a lot of action happening, um, within our finance committee. We just continue to want to really dial in, um, the way our financial reports are presented, the way that we understand the way that money moves in and out of the organization. And I think it's particularly important that we're doing that work right now because as we start to think about future planning, we really need to, um, be able to, uh, understand how to sustain the operations of the foundation. Perhaps invest even additional staffing needed, um, for, um, a, a, any kind of campaign that might come down the road. Um, and, um, marketing and all, you know, all those additional expenses that might come along with that kind of work. Um, and, uh, and within our governance committee, we are looking at a, a few different policies that are important to the operations of the foundation. Um, we're going to be revisiting our investment policy just to recertify that. I think, I don't think there'll be any huge material changes. Um, and then we're still, um, working on looking at our records retention and making sure that that is up to date on an annual basis, um, that we're just revisiting that. So those are kind of the big benefits for us right now.
Katie, we will meet again before the book gala at Prairie Lights. Do you want to tell the new members what that is?
Sure. The book gala is a very casual and fun fundraising event. Um, people who are used to going to it usually keep their list of books that they're hoping to buy for, uh, the holidays. Candy, um, you come to Prairie Lights, um, do a little bit of shopping. Um, usually they have a few refreshments and, um, and I, I stand at the door and I greet everyone and thank them, thank them for coming and supporting the library. And, um, it usually makes anywhere between eight hundred and twelve hundred dollars, um, depending on kind of attendance. And, um, it's just a nice little, a nice little fundraising event for us. And then our, our big event after that, um, even bigger, is, um, our Arts and Crafts Bazaar happening in the summer. Um, so if you know any crafters, uh, know anybody who is a maker of some kind, and we're soliciting donations now for that. And, um, and if you're a, uh, if you want for a volunteer background check of policy, um, uh, we would love to welcome you as a volunteer. That, that too is a great way to talk to the folks who come through that want to support the library.
And I want to say the book gala attendees are mostly the library community. So the store is not formally open that night. I'm not, I'm not going to run away, but, um, it's, it's mostly the library folks, library community there. Folks meaning donors, volunteers, larger bunch of people. You get to steal ideas what they're reading. Um, advocacy updates.
Go ahead, Council, you read it and it's fabulous, but, um, I didn't, I didn't make a change. Okay. Um, so, uh, a lot has happened with the whole situation. I'm sure many of you have seen this in the papers already, or wherever you get your news. But, um, the Des Moines folks hired, um, the prison system, prison labor to move the materials from Iowa City to Des Moines. The first day they were there, it was raining some. And so there were a lot of concerns expressed about how that would affect the materials. Um, a lawsuit has been filed, uh, basically saying that state law requires this location to exist, not the specific building, but in a location for research in Iowa City, which it does, right there in plain language in the statute. Um, last I heard, there had not been a ruling on the restraining order that they were seeking to keep the materials that are currently here, here. So it is a fast-moving situation. Um, we've put together a statement. It is in draft form and probably not ready for primetime just yet. Um, so that will be available to approve at our next meeting though. So a lot of, uh, concerning developments. I'm hopeful that the lawsuit is going to kick off some changes, so.
When do you think you'll hear something about the loss of whether they had to review frozen? Because this seemed to happen rather spontaneously from the news reports. It just showed up one morning.
Well, I mean, it can't have been that spontaneous because I had to get a contract in place.
Well, spontaneous in terms of the community seeing.
Yes, um, I don't know much more about it than what's been in the paper, so, um, we'll see what happens with the lawsuit. I would think there's gotta be a ruling on that soon. Usually when you're seeking a restraining order, it's a yes or no, it'd be a pretty short order, but I haven't seen anything yet.
It seems like it's been a couple of weeks.
It has, which surprises me. But I don't litigate.
No, it's just like you raised.
I, I, I put together businesses. Don't just walk on them.
Your statement is gonna be and, uh, you know, a recap on the conditions and that's how we like, like we stand with. Statements already out there, the lawsuit, the city's statement, you know, like we're.
Right.
We're, it's kind of a, a statement of solidarity for the general.
Yeah.
Anything else on that? All right, um, we had a series of news articles, new packets, notifications, comments. You are, you seem to be interviewed often. Getting your face out there. No comments, we're fine. Um, can we approve the minutes of the September twenty-fifth meeting? This will be the whole consent agenda, actually. We approved the consent agenda. Any questions, Paula? So then we will need motion to approve it. Salute. Okay, right. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, okay. Um, the dispersments, we need to approve the dispersments. If you get a chance to look those over. Oh, it's by the consent, okay. So we can move this into one step after the approval. So we're good. Um, the agenda for next month, we have got, um, the, the carpet discussion scheduled. We have got, um, a recommendation from the bylaws working group. Um, is it, have to be ready?
Oh, yeah. It's at the legal right now.
Yeah. I think maybe we should see it before it goes to legal review going forward.
Just be gone.
Use, yeah, but I'm just saying going forward because we're gonna end up using the city's, um, legal department twice. Because it's not something that the board's approved. So I think in the beginning, in process wise, the future, if the working groups would come back to the board before they go to the city, it would be a smoother process.
You'll have to retrieve them and.
No, I'm just saying going forward, for any time we're putting something together and we're gonna use city staff time, it might be better that we send what the board wants to have sent rather than just the working group. So we don't have to use their time twice. Just as an efficiency issue.
Yes, the, the other issue is if you approve them, they could go to legal and legal could.
They could turn them back to us, but I feel like we, um, this way legal is seeing them and we don't even know what they say. And you're asking legal to review them. The board hasn't seen them. So there's an awkwardness to that. I know others think, oh, this, ask us.
At the end, I'd be fine reviewing it with the board first. I think either way of the option of, yeah, approving and then needing to re-approve.
I just want to say, I want to be respectful of the city's legal department, so.
You have to call them back then because they've been sent there.
Yeah, I know. Well, I know, I'm saying in the future, with the future, we're not gonna, with this one, we're gonna continue the process that's begun. But I think in the future, if we needed to have city staff, a city staff look at something, let's make sure we're as near completion as we can before we ask their opinion.
let's make sure we're as near completion as we can before we ask them, just so that we're economical about it.
Are bylaws annual? Is that what they do every year?
Every three years, unless there's a reason why we need to.
And part of this, I mean, in three years, we.
Well, part of this is because. And part of this is there's been some changes in the state's recommendations or requirements of us.
So we'll have to.
And it's really the only policy that you kind of work with, um right, right, the staff um is the one that brings the recommendations for the other policies, so we can, we can just write up.
Well, I just think in the future, I just, I want to be respectful of the city's time.
Yeah, I want to make sure we remember that in three years.
Yeah.
It's been there twice already, or one once already.
The cit- the city?
It's good, went there where I don't know why or how, but a person in the legal department sent back a lot of some suggestions for changes, uh mostly having to do with the use of shall and will. Twenty-five shalls are gone from the document. It may have to go to the Supreme Court.
We're only abused because you're such a stickler of that.
I'll have to make a note that we're about our process so far.
Let's finish the process and then review it, because now that I'm hearing that it's gone twice to them.
Before, before, Corey, that I even thought about, even dreamed of looking at it. It was sent over there, and I don't know how. Uh for somebody looked at it and lawyers there looked at it, and mostly the changes were shall and will. There were a few others, but but those were the major ones.
They are of sorts.
I, and the bylaws have been on the calendar for, oh, and I think they went to legal originally because they had, there were some state law interpretations in those meetings. And so that was work that was done prior. They were already there.
They requested before we even started reviewing. We are in unusual times.
So we, we wanted that information for you while we reviewed.
I forgot about the state wanting to see me do it, because of the state changes before this. Okay. So Nick, we will be in suspense until next month on that. Um and then we are looking at the collection development policy.
So uh I just, if we're gonna get a, you know, presentation explanation about how the collection process works with the digital and the physical materials, would we want to do that before we're looking at the policy?
Well, um so the policy seeds purchasing to the end of the collection services department or collection services staff. Um and that's not gonna change, um if you want that, um we could move the uh collection development policy, um where it's ready to go, um but we're happy to.
Well, I mean, I haven't, I haven't looked at what we have already, so I'm asking you, does it make sense or is it?
I I wouldn't think it um would, um I don't think it would have any bearing on how the digital collections are purchased, the policy itself. The policy is just a set of guidelines of of overview of what we purchase, rather than individual um price points or um or how those collections are specifically managed. But um and I was thinking the digital materials presentation would happen mostly more in December, January, um just because of the fullness of the November meeting already with the carpeting um discussion, and then we'll have the advocacy statement, we'll have to add to the agenda as well. Um but we can, um if, I mean, that's up to you, when you guys want to review the policy.
We also will be bringing in new collections coordinators, so there's another variable.
I think that maybe you're thinking the collection development policy itself is pretty big picture.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Yeah, the the policy um sets up, uh the main discussions that we'll talk about is reconsideration, whether or not an item is in, is reconsidered, um and then um artificial intelligence and impacts of that on the collection.
Might give us a good foundation of knowledge as we continue the discussion over the few months. So would people prefer to put it off, or should we keep it on for next month and see how it works out?
Let's see, I think, sounds like we can keep it.
Going forwards?
Yeah, and it's a good time to review it as we go into legislative session.
Yes, she means we're also in for the advocacy. Our work group. Um so that's our agenda for November. Uh we have a motion to adjourn. Are there any announcements from members? I didn't even ask any announcements. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
We have a second? Okay, all those in favor? Oppose.